Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time if you could silence your cellphones and then we will get started with the meeting. Item 2A, Hearing Code of Conduct, Mr. Servoni.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
This is Kylie.
Hi, thanks, good.
Thanks, Lou. Alright, good evening, everybody. My name's Jeff Servoni. I'm Principal here at the Junior-Senior High School. This is our second update of the Code of Conduct. There's three new updates. The first one is on page 22. Turn to that page, please. We adjusted some of the start times at the different schools, so we added that to the Code of Conduct for the district. They're highlighted at the bottom. Place school stays the same. GLP changed a little bit, as did the elementary school.
Could you tell why?
I think it had to do with scheduling and just doing what's good for kids, getting them to their electives and out of school on time. All of it had to do with some transportation.
So, my understanding is that when the weather turns poor, it's difficult for the buses to get back to GLP on time, which was causing some late dismissal. So you guys shifted? And that should help?
Yeah, the elementary and primary schools.
That's my understanding.
They all shifted. We didn't have to do anything up here.
Okay.
But they think this change will make the schedule work a lot better.
Alright.
It's a good change. Page 23. Second paragraph under early dismissal. Where am I on here? Yep, early dismissal. We removed some of the middle high school, junior, senior high things. We've been changing those. We found another one where it said, "Second paragraph, junior, senior high." We changed it to middle and high. You can see the highlighted section up top. And then toward the bottom, "Second paragraph, under early dismissal." We just talked about parent or guardian or approved adult actually coming in and signing their child out. Okay, the last change is on page 32. This was in response to new entrance at the middle school, high school, and number two, under visitors to the school. We just added that they will use the main entrance and that they will have to present photo ID.
Did that address your issue? Okay. There was another late change, too, about students holding doors, propping doors open. Did that get in here?
That's not in this version, though.
Okay.
Okay, that's the latest, greatest version of this. I think we're probably good to let this sit for the 30 days. If you have any questions or comments, please. It should be an email or email.
Barb, does it need to sit for another 30? Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the Model UN presentation. Oh, how do we say that last name? Adam?
Rakiki.
Rakiki? Rakaki, sorry.
Hi, Adam. Ms. Lucinda, how do they get the PowerPoint up there? So how do we get to it? We need Mrs. Carstens' help here.
Go to other documents. Is that what you want?
Can I pull it off here? So can you come help me with that? Just so I don't get to a place I don't want to be?
Yeah, what do you need, a computer? Uh, no.
He has a PowerPoint.
Stack of documents. And that was the...oh, this one. This one, right.
Where is it?
On the left here?
That one.
I don't hear that one. And it's gonna be...you'll click through. On the side here, Sandy. Okay. So you have to tell me when to click. And I can't see behind me. I know people think teachers have eyes in the back of their head, but I don't.
So hello, my name is Adam Rakiki. And as many of you know, I'm the president of the U.S. Club. Here at U.S. Club, I was passed able to contribute to the idea of the Cornell University of New York for the Cornell International Law and UN Conference. This competition was a four-day conference. Both ideas will debate hard work, camaraderie, and also physical fun. The conference required weeks of research and work to prepare for the rigorous debate. In fact, the conference involved a total of 18 hours of committee sessions. Schools from all around the country and also all around the globe were in attendance. 68 schools and delegations sent to the conference and members from other nations, including...
No? No? Alright. What do I need to do? Oh, wait, this way? No? I need Lucinda.
Oh, yeah, just scroll down. Scroll down with the down arrow key. There you go.
Scroll off. There. Okay. Here. One more? There, alright. You and I should've practiced.
You should've practiced.
Is that right?
Yeah, it did an update from what I shared. I made changes, so I'm sorry. I'll have to use...the pictures are the same, but this slide isn't. So nations that attended were of course, the United States, Canada, Mexico, the United Kingdom, India, Venezuela, Pakistan, China, Indonesia.
Well, that's a lot.
Yes, all of them. They'll meet some students from all these nations who are in attendance. Each one of us represented a different country or person in all the committee, each with their own separate mission. Let's go up to the first one.
This one?
Two more up.
Two more up? This is really down for me, but okay. The other way. Up and downs causing this trouble. Alright, I'm in.
So I represent Mr. Ngat Singh of South Africa for the International Living Committee. Rebecca Nabel represented Tony Robinson of the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Mary Allen represented the vicious Albert Anastagia and Ntsefamgano in the Mafias of New York City Committee. Eddie Rodman represented China in the Committee on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice. Eddie Palkever represented Egypt in the Social, Humanitarian, Culture Committee. Josh Williams represented Iran in Special Political and Decolonization Committee. Gavin Falter represented Equatorial Guinea in the United Nations Security Council. Maddie Pye represented Turkey in the Legal Committee. Cameron Cummins represented... Arjuna in the Disarmament and International Security Committee. And Blaise Weber represented Comeros in the African Union. That for the next one.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
It's straightforward. We are nowhere. Upon arrival, we had an opening ceremony in the beautiful and antiquated Bailey Hall, where we were introduced to the staff of the conference and then listened to the keynote speaker, Courtney Recht. She's been a journalist for many papers around the world and in the U.S., including the New York Times and the Washington Post. The message of her presentation was freedom of press. There's no argument that in this day, fake news accusations and other such things are going on in our media and even in other nations journalists are being killed and jailed for their job. Courtney stressed the importance of free journalism and protecting it. Hence, there is a free journalism committee being a part of this conference. From then on, we went into our first committee session and began choosing our topics and entering debate. Through debate, students began throwing their own ideas on how they could solve the issues that faced them. It was very important that each committee had delegates that could work together in order to create practical solutions that would end their issues. Through this, delegates continued debate and began presenting their resolutions to the committee. Many times, there's a multitude of resolutions that address certain aspects of the issue. So that would be a matter of finding the resolutions or simply pass multiple resolutions. Some were passed, some were not, and some made amendments. Some were passed, some were not, and others had amendments made to them. A unique aspect of this conference was news updates. In almost every committee, news alerts came up and informed committee of new and important information that happened in the world. These updates could work towards delegates' advantages or great crises within committees. Let's scroll down. I'm happy to say that most of our students who attended were able to pass a resolution and that they helped write or even wrote themselves. At the end of each day, we came together in our hotel to discuss what happened that day in our committees. Here, we're able to give each other advice and spread ideas on how to do that the next day. As much as the challenges was to get through these committee sessions, we were able to have some fun on our trip as well. At any moment we had outside the conference, we were able to hang out and explore the campus and the town of Ithaca together. On Saturday night, the conference held a delegate dance in which I even got to a dance battle with another guy who had matching sunglasses. So that was pretty fun. At the end of the conference, they held a... At the end of the conference, they held a closing ceremony to say goodbye and to thank us all for our hard work. It was a bittersweet moment as we created so many memories and knowing that we were able to work with the future leaders of the world. I'd like to thank the school for giving us this wonderful opportunity and also like to thank the members of my club for all the work, hard work they do to keep Model UN running strong. I'm glad that I can graduate knowing that the future of this club is bright.
Thank you.
Now, in our committee, we'd like to have a little five-minute demonstration on how a Model UN works.
Awesome.
And with that, I'm hoping we can get one or two board members to join in on this experience. If you'd like, we have live memories. So does it cut here?
If you don't volunteer, he's gonna pick.
I'll volunteer.
That's right. If you don't volunteer, you get chosen. Are these for volunteer positions? Marlene's got one. Wait, maybe not, no?
They may have volunteers.
This should be the board. Oh, she doesn't...Marlene, you lost your chance.
There he is. So, any points of vote? Motion to open the meeting. That is in order, second?
Adam.
Yes, it's you. Up, yeah, I can do it. Up.
Motion to open the meeting.
That is in order, I have a second. South Africa, all in favor, open debate. We're now in the...any points of motion this time? Canada.
Motion to present the crisis.
That is in order, I have a second. France, all in favor, presenting the crisis. That is in order. Alright, crisis. At approximately 4:00 PM Pacific Time, alien fleets have landed in L.A., San Francisco, and San Diego and began an attack on the cities and are slowly moving eastward. Intentions are unknown and more landings are possible. Civilians of all three cities are being captured and they're currently moving to the armed zone. So that is our crisis. Any points of motion?
Russia. Motion for a five-minute moderated caucus, 30 seconds speaking time to discuss the current crisis.
That is in order, all in a second. South Africa, all in favor. Thank you. Any nation wishing to speak, raise your hands. United States.
United States cannot infringe on this body how very important this is that we address this issue and that we all come together and help the United States, which will in turn be helping the rest of the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other nations wishing to speak? Russia.
Russia would like to propose that a coalition of troops from any nation wishing to lend aid to use to assist the United States in dispatching current invasion because this crisis could very well spread by the countries that we don't want to involve.
Thank you very much. France.
The delegation of France acknowledges that this city is imminent and that we need to, as Russia says, create a troop of nations that are willing to help the U.S. on a united front against extraterrestrial threats.
Thank you very much. Any nation to speak? Canada.
I'd like to reiterate the statements of my fellow delegates here in saying that it is imperative that we form some kind of force to counteract the attacks on the United States. The United States is one of the biggest superpowers we have here in the world. And if they were to go down, the rest of us will probably more likely go down with it. So I suggest a resolution be written or passed to pass this.
Thank you very much. Nation wishing to speak? Spain.
The delegation of Spain would like to agree with the delegation of China, which should unify against the extraterrestrial threats.
Thank you very much. Any nation to speak? Ireland.
Ireland would like to express that it agrees with the statements in the wild of the nation's spirit. How would we should send a phone or a team to first-hand negotiate for a way to end it?
Thank you very much. Nation wishing to speak? France.
With all due respect to Ireland, we need to deal with this threat immediately as it is already affecting the U.S. We cannot waste time sending somebody to try and talk to these extraterrestrial threats who we don't know.
Thank you very much. Nation wishing to speak? South Africa.
South Africa believes that all countries should put up their military and be prepared for any cautions and/or extraterrestrial invasion.
Thank you very much. Canada, motion?
Motion to present any directives or reporting papers that are on the floor?
That is in order, I have a second. France, all in favor. That is open. Any word papers wishing to be presented? Russia, you have?
Yes. Resolution. The United Nations Security Council assembled recognizing the dire threat posed to all nations which are on the menu. The extraterrestrial military conflict was creating a major problem for the United States. One, it resolves to work as a net in front for the purposes of saving humanity. Two, creates a combined need that would force the international fleet for the purposes of the same. A, ensuring of a minimum of 15% of each nation's military passing its expenditure. B, led by a capable and well-trained personnel department. I, elected by the Security Council. I, I, answering the same. C, to be resolved following the end of conflict. D, remove to discrimination made between military personnel of different nationalities. Three, to the larger state of conflict and all participants from nations per... the extraterrestrials. Sponsors are Russia and the United States.
Thank you very much. To any more? Canada. That is in order, I have a second. All in favor. Passes. And that's the main motion. Go ahead, start.
I would. Thank you. I would like to ask Russia, the delegation of Russia, how they plan to elect this official to lead the armies against this alien force. They are essentially deciding the future of mankind. I think it is important that we figure out a smart way to end the situation.
We think we would be elected by the Security Council responsible for the same. I believe that elected... elected by the Security Council.
You just said the President.
France.
Question from the delegation of Russia. Isn't there an issue with giving somebody this much power as like you said, the state of humanity is kind of at risk here and we should try to make this as easy to deal with and as possible?
I understand your concerns, but I believe that having a single leader unite some of the military forces in the union is a necessity given with such a dangerous system.
Have we talked about this question? Next.
We of the Chinese delegation are concerned about the effectiveness of an allied assault on these extraterrestrial forces. We'd like to know what guarantees you have in all aspects.
Well, the short answer is that we don't really have any guarantee, but I think that this is probably the best that we can do here with this.
Thank you very much. South Africa, four minutes remaining. Any points of motion? Russia.
Motion to enhance the voting procedure. I would like to come to the floor.
That is in order, I have a second on that. France. Alright, all in favor of any voting procedures? We have not any voting procedures. Do we have any points of motion on the floor? United States.
One speaker for, one speaker against.
That is in order, I have a second on that. All in favor. Alright, Chad.
Oh, okay.
Any speaker has? China.
The United States is one of the sponsors on this resolution. Truly believes that Russia and I and the signatories that we really have worked hard on developing a resolution that could solve these problems or really address the issues at hand. I recommend that everyone in this body vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Canada.
Fellow delegates. Our enemies are obviously more technologically advanced than we are. And there is...well, there are of course some inherent issues that we can't avoid. So any advance that we commence against them will be seen nothing or as...will be seen as nothing more than a threat. Now, if we...if we... Pardon me. If we oppose them, we will not be tolerated. There is no reason for them to tolerate us. And quite frankly, survival is better than extinction. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. We will now enter voting. All in favor for Directive 1.0, raise your hands. All opposed. With 11. Thank you. Any objections? Seeing none, with 11 and four and two against, Directive 1.0 passes. And we save the roll.
That was hard. I was waiting for India and Ukraine to say something, so... Thank you, guys. That was a lot.
Yeah.
India's going back.
It's fast.
Yeah, it's fast.
How?
I don't know.
I don't know how. I don't know how. I don't...sorry.
That was really bad.
So, Adam, does it have to be that fast? Or did you make it that fast for us?
Well, we just wanted to sell that. It would take us too much time, but...
So how long would you normally take to do something like that?
Usually, that's a resolution. It can take anywhere from an hour to three.
Wow. And do you know what the issue is ahead of time? Or are you making it up as you go?
Yes. They give us...the committee usually...they give us three topics two weeks in advance. And once we get to the committee, we all have to discuss which one is the most important.
And so do you get points for everybody contributing? Or not necessarily?
We get points for speaking, for presenting motions, for being a sponsor on that, which means you co-wrote or wrote it yourself. And yeah, we get points for collaboration, talking, making progress for the nations.
And would...this was states? Or not really states?
No, this was a very...this Cornell is a very highly-ranked international conference. It's ranked in the top five in the world. So it's very...it's very...it's very... Almost all the schools that attend it. Model UN is a class for them. So they...they're very...
Wow. Is this the third time you guys went?
This is ours...this is our second time. Yeah, this is our second time.
I guess for the club as a whole, we've been there several times over the course of my 20 years.
Yeah.
At least for this group, yeah.
For this group. For this group, with all of the hurdles that they have had to face over the last four years. This was...I'm very proud of them because they made this happen. They wanted this club. They made it happen.
Yes, they did.
They worked it out. And they practiced and did the research to do it.
Yep, and you did it really cost-effectively, too, because you didn't get a bus at the end, did you? No, I know you didn't. Good job.
Next up, Ms. Hartman to talk about the School Resource Officer.
I'm not sure how to follow "saving the world," but I'll try here. So I appreciate the board adding me to your agenda tonight. I wanted to speak to you in regards to the SRO, School Resource Officer. And I'm gonna do that as a supervisor now and I'll come back for my mother comments. So I want to explain to the board, and I know you've heard me say this before, but we do have a larger audience tonight, exactly what a School Resource Officer is and how it would protect our school. When I say "per se" caps, it's more about prevention. And a School Resource Officer is really a community officer and someone that connects with our students and somebody who forms relationships with our students, who forms trust with our students and is able to be inside of our school when we're not able to as a municipality police department. And so, one of the most important things that an SRO can provide to our community is trust, relationship building, and putting our community at ease. And I know that last night, it's not a secret, that our budget was turned...was not passed. I can imagine...you can imagine, as I'm driving home from a two-day trip to Albany, lobbying our senators and our assembly men and women to support our community with funding for an SRO, support all communities in New York State with a couple of different options for schools that don't currently have an SRO, to be driving home at 9:30 at night to realize that we may have lost our funding and an opportunity to have an SRO in our school. I had a very successful trip along with two other supervisors and myself, Brian Culpa from the town of Amherst, as well as Mary Hostler from the town of Evans, both of which have SROs, but in their opinion, not enough. The town of Amherst has to protect 22 schools, and that's just public, not including the three universities that also are in their district or in their municipality. Evans also has an SRL. They're currently working to fund a second. And so there was a wide perspective. Obviously, we are not Amherst and we are not Evans. But we all have the same issues that those towns have. And during the day, our largest gathering area in our municipality is our school. It's our children. And so, to me, the number one priority should be protecting them. And so I brought this message along with my fellow supervisors, to...I think we had eight or nine meetings, different senators, bipartisan, different assembly men and women, to talk about the importance of what our schools go through, how our budgets work. And I requested...we really focused on two particular issues that we've discussed here. We asked for support in the Senator Gallivan's proposed and cast to the Senate legislation of a school safety package, two specific items, which is increase...or, I'm sorry, providing $50,000 of funding to every school in New York State so that they can opt in to having a School Resource Officer funded. We also asked for them to increase the maximum amount allowable for retired police officer, which is currently $30,000 to $50,000 in order to give municipalities and school districts alternative options and better financial scenarios. You know, there's not always a scenario where you can have a full-time police officer. So this gives us more options. I would say that my meetings were very successful. There is definitely support in the Western New York delegation. Unfortunately, I do have to report that I do not think that either one of these will pass by the end of June this year. But all of the senators and assembly people, with the exception of one, made a commitment to us as, you know, representatives from Western New York that they will continue to work hard to get this into our budget process for next year. So much so that we are looking at some options of rewriting some of the past legislation through the Senate so that it will work for the assembly, which is currently where it's held up. We were able to meet with a Senate Minority Leader who represents downstate. And she did mention to us that we opened her eyes to a scenario she was never aware that existed. And that had to do with tax-cut budgets for small towns and for small school districts. And so I would just like to respectfully request that funding for the SRO still remain in this budget process. And I understand and sympathize with you as we go through budget processes ourselves and the manner of how difficult it is... and the matter of how difficult it is to put together a budget that works for every community member. And so as the town supervisor who is currently working with the school district, as well as my board members, Rich Bunches here, Deputy Supervisor, I'm not sure who the other one is, um, to put this in place for our 2018, 2019 school, I am, again, respectfully requesting that you leave the SRO funding, if that's possible, into the budget, um, for consideration when you move forward with the decision you're gonna have to make on, on how you proceed with your budget.
So Ms. Hartman, could you just back up for a moment, because I think that most people sitting here wouldn't understand the difference between Downstate and us, because Downstate doesn't have SROs and they don't have really the small, small rural schools either.
Well, so there's Downstate, which would also include some school districts that do have SRO options. Um, when I speak of Downstate, I mainly am speaking of New York City area schools. And, uh, they have cities, actually, not just New York City, but the city of Buffalo and Syracuse, um, as well as New York City have police security. Um, their peace officers, um, some are privately hired, most are publicly hired. Uh, they do not follow the SRO, uh, state situation. They're much larger schools, which much, much larger budgets. Um, and so it's difficult sometimes when you only deal with those type of situations. They're, obviously, you know, they're urban, we're rural, um, and it was an eye-opener for people who don't deal with that on a daily basis. We were very fortunate to have the meetings that we did. We're certainly not done, um, getting that message across. And so, um, you know, I will continue fighting every day until we have security in this school or an SRO that's gonna start this relationship with these students. Um, and so I'm just asking that we do that as well. And, um, when I come back as a mom, I, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the communication that I hope to see in the town and the, and in the district. So I'll do that in my, at the other open hearings.
Questions?
Thank you for going down there. Thank you for advocating.
It was a rural end, two days. Um, it was a nice learning experience for me, um, but I, I will say that regardless of what side of politics you are, uh, we were, uh, really well received, you know, they were just great to us. Um, no matter how they felt, where they voted, uh, they truly appreciate us coming down and they do truly wanna work and make this work for our community.
I do have a question. In the Western New York area, how many school districts currently employ or have in some way, shape, or form an SRO?
Uh, I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you, we were one of the few. And since then, um.
Few that does not have one?
That does not have one.
Okay.
Um, the list that, we had the Village of Hamburg and Hamburg Central Schools just hired and is already began. They were one with us, um, as well as Orchard Park just passed their resolution to hire one. I'm not really sure when that one starts. Um, we are probably looking at as one of the only now at this point without an SRO.
Okay. Yeah.
I know I can speak up. I work for Erie Two BOSIs and I work in an alternative education building in the District of Orchard Park on Baker Road. And we are a school of only about 100 students, um, probably, probably 50 staff members. So we've got like, you know, at-risk kids. And we share, BOSI shares an SRO, which is a Orchard Park Police Officer, um, in our building all day. Uh, so the two services share the expense of it. And granted, we're a very small population with very at-risk kids, but I shudder to think what that building would be like or what my thought on a daily basis of going to work would be like if we did not have an SRO in our building. It's a godsend, it really is.
I think one thing I wanna mention to, um, the prevention piece is that, um, the prevention of an SRO officer is almost something that cannot be measured. So you hear the statistics of possibly a news story or statistic of, of the amount of active shooters that they've stopped. Um, there's so many more that SROs have been able to have that not even begin, and it's not measurable. Um, you know, there's, there are a lot of issues that happen in the school today and I'm not an expert to talk about it, but I can tell you from sitting with the town of Amherst and listening to some of the stories, a lot of the concerns that we have in our school district are not the planning of an active shooter in our school. It's mental health issues, it's issues that are happening at home and being brought to school, it's issues that teachers and our small staff of counselors, our principals, our administration are not prepared to handle, as many cases as we have. Having an SRO in our school is somebody that keeps an eye on Billy, who's sitting by himself with a black guy in the school, that nobody else is seeing, but he is. It's preventing an issue from starting. It's, I get that there's a, well, I don't understand this philosophy anymore, that it's not gonna happen in our town, no matter how far you wanna look at it. We are Sandy Hook. We are Parkland, Florida. We are the same type of community. But, I, every time I say it, I have to knock on wood, saying that that is not going to happen, it's not just that piece. It's the piece that prevents, it's the piece that sees, it's the piece that can connect with a student who can become a community member, who can see something we're not. And so having a, a police officer who has no connection to that student walk into our school and has to deal with those issues is different from a trusted person that's been working with that student. It just is. Amherst had a situation where a mother had a restraining order on the second or third day of school, she shows up at the bus release time. And two police officers in a car had to come and arrest a mom in front of pre-K kindergarten, first grade students. What message does that send to our students about how to trust a police officer when they're arresting a mom, not knowing the situation? Where an SRO could've came and totally taken care of that issue in a different way, because maybe they would've known that was happening, maybe they would've had some in, in, you know, inside knowledge. I don't know, but there, there is an answer and it's out there and it's being utilized and it's being used in our other communities and the model works. And so I am begging that we consider this for our school district. Just because we are small and our budgets are small, doesn't mean we can't figure out a way to make this happen. And I do feel that it's unfair, there is not funding available. And as I'm driving home and through it last night and I'm seeing all these signs that are coming down, I'm thinking, what wasted money? Give me 1% of that money and we can have an SRO. So that's the part I have to work on as a leader in your community. That's the part that, um, our volunteers on this board are working on every day, sending letters to our legislators and working in behind the scenes that the community doesn't see. Um, and it doesn't just take one, it takes an army of community to put this together. And so, um, you know, when I say I'm not gonna start fighting and my board's not gonna stop fighting and I know you won't stop fighting, I'm asking the community to stop, not stop fighting either. And not turn your head the other way, because these things happen and we can prevent it and we can form different relationships with our students and make this a better place for them. And this is the time to do it. So, and then I'll come back and then be my mom. I'll be a mom. Thank you.
As I just can piggyback a little bit on what Ms. Hartman said, um, you know, it's not strictly about the gun and the shooter. Um, I'm sure Parkland had no idea that it figured it would happen and I'm sure Sandy Hook didn't expect it to happen to them. Our SRO in our building is really there primarily for trust, that the kids who are at risk can trust somebody. Right now, the students I work with have a very poor impression of police people. Okay? They see this stuff on social media, they see this stuff about, you know, it's terrible. So these guys, this, this particular SRO that we have this year, who's now hired full-time, he comes in and I can see just since September, the change in culture, climate in our building with very at-risk high school kids, just for his mere presence. His door is always open. He's not walking around with his hand on his gun, waiting to catch the next person that walks through the door. He's there to build relationships with our students, to talk them down if they come in because there was a domestic at the house that morning that they had to deal with before they come into the building. They're there for far more reasons than just about an active shooter. I think that would be really just an add-on, it could be a preventive thing. But it's more like Ms. Hartman said, it's being proactive instead of reactive, like if it happens, now what? Instead, these kids can go on, in our building, can go on to be productive citizens out in the community, because they've been, had good role models. And, uh, sometimes the teacher can only do so much, you know, we're the teacher, you know, we're the teacher. So, uh, I, I can't say I could go on all night about that, but, and I'm living a career where it works.
So Ms. Hartman, I just, I just wanted to put it out there that I know that we've been meeting with the first responders in town, Senator Gallivan's office with Mitch Martin and also David Di Pietro, our Assemblyman, but I also wanted to put out there that the offer is there from PTA if we wanna put a group of people together on a bus to go back. I know you probably not really wanna hear about going back to Albany, but, as I, because you just drove there and came back. But, but there is money earmarked from PTA if in fact you feel, um, that it would be worthwhile for us to go back out there to help on these two bills. Okay?
Possibly in the fall. I think that's where we're gonna need to go.
Okay. Maybe Model UN kids can help us out on that.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Items for routine action, approve, approval of consensus item, oh, I'm sorry, skip three. Any requests to withdraw specific items from consensus items? Okay. Item four, routine actions, approval of consensus items, that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through T.
Second.
A through what?
A through T, it says.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, I just couldn't hear you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Um, this is the time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and then respond appropriately at a future meeting or possibly tonight. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Anybody? Yep? Yes.
Now I'm speaking as a mother. Ms. Hartman, do we have to carry addresses?
Just your name is fine.
Okay. Um, I have two babies in this school. I'm not allowed to call my 11-year-old a baby anymore, but I still do. And, um, as a community member, I would like to request that you commit to the SRO funding. But more importantly, I wanna ask our community to, um, to start to be kind again. And I don't know how to say that in a way that is appropriate for my position, so I'm not gonna say it as, as me as a human. There are ways to get information in this town, and I talked about this last week in a different setting, that needs to start happening in the right way again. I respect people's opinions, but when it's the cost of our students and our children in this town, I have to put my foot down. There are volunteers on this board, there are volunteers in our town that every night sacrifice watching a baseball game, I miss my daughters on Mondays, that miss family commitments, time with their families, to do something for this community. And they get bashed online. And I have a problem with that. And now it happened at the expense of our children's safety. I'm not saying that the vote would've changed. I don't know why people in this town didn't vote for the budget and I respect their decision. But to put blatant information that is not true on a public forum in our town, to sway a decision of somebody who may not understand that that is not the correct information is unacceptable. To go on and say that it's time to get rid of a board that nobody else has volunteered to be on is unacceptable. These are volunteers in our community who do not get paid. I get paid. Sometimes a dollar twenty-five an hour, but I get paid. They do not. And until somebody steps up, shame on them, to go on to a public forum in our community and tell the community it's time to get rid of them. Because I didn't see that person step up and put their name on the ballot. I didn't think I'd do this, ma'am, but I am and my time is up. But I'm just asking that this community please be kind again. This is not the community that I moved to. This is not the community that most of you grew up in. This is not the place to be like that. Get your information, get your facts, and then post it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a tough act to follow. Yes?
What's she said?
Can you nickname the silencer, Ms. Hartman?
Okay. No one else? Really? Okay.
Okay.
We'll be moving on. Item A, resignations. Oh, this makes me so sad. Recommended mo-
She's happy. You want me to say it?
I'm gonna get it.
You want somebody else to read it?
Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of elementary teacher Carol King be accept, accepted effective June 30th, 2018.
Any discussion?
So I spoke with Carol a little while back. She's living out near the Washington area. Am I right, Linda?
Washington, D.C.
Want to see? She's, she's having a blast. She's, she's, um, she misses being here. We miss her. She had such an incredible, um, impact on not just GOP, but on everyone at school. And so we're glad she's happy, but we absolutely do miss her and I, I know she meant a lot to you. Jack might still need to keep reading.
Sorry. Good. I'm just.
We need a second first.
Okay. Second. Any discuss? I'm all out of sorts now.
You're human, that's okay. Those in favor?
No, we say, any discussion? No. We did. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
So, good for Carol.
Okay, I got it. I'm good.
You're good?
Item two. Oh, come on. Accept, uh, accept resignation, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of clerk typist Cheryl Lynn Stevens be accepted effective April 17th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just a reminder, and it's there in italics, that we moved that position from a clerk typist position to a senior clerk typist position, since Cheryl operates alone in the office many times when Mary Banco is driving, when we're short drivers. And so in order for that to occur, the senior clerk typist position is more appropriate to the position.
Anything else? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item three, uh, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Tosa Marissa Falacaro be accepted effective May 16th, pending appointment as director, director of athletics, physical education, and health.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Here are the recommended motions. Item one, appoint director of athletics, physical education, and health, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Marissa Falacaro Doerty, who is initially certified as school building leader, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the athletic director tenure area for a probationary period commencing on May 17th, 2018, and ending on May 16th, 2022, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3020 of Education Law in order to be granted tenure. The administrator must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the administrator receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the administrator should not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is per-rated at $87,500 annually.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank God. Thank you.
All in favor?
Hold on. So I, I just want to just put out there publicly that one of the reasons why this position, um, is being recommended for a administrative position as opposed to a Tosa, which is a teacher on special assignment position, is because, um, as a administrator, we can make her work seven days a week. Um, we can't necessarily do that with some of our other, um, positions. And as you know, being visible and accessible is one of the most valuable pieces for our, And as you know, being visible and accessible is one of the most valuable pieces for our, for our, for our administrators, especially within these three areas. And so she's done a great job as a Tosa. She's done that anyways as a Tosa. But what we have heard from our community is that they really, really want her to be around. And so, thank goodness, I agree with you. Okay? I appreciate your support.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, Marissa. Good job.
All right. Item two.
Go to work. Go to work, Marissa. She's not listening. She's not listening. Yeah, there must be a game or something right now, right? Yeah, you just got off. Okay.
Appoint summer transportation personnel. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed for summer transportation positions. As listed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item C, appoint summer school personnel. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel be appointed for summer school effective July 2nd, 2018 through August 10th, 2018. As listed, special education teachers, nurses, speech therapists, special education aides, and substitute special education teacher aides.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a reminder that summer school this summer will again be at North Collins. We did this last year, and it worked out really well. This is our way during the capital project for us to accommodate Town Rec. And so it's a nice partnership between the two because it's difficult to find that kind of space. We're really glad to put Town Rec back into the elementary school, though. GLP was just a little too small during a really rainy season. So I just wanted to remind everybody that summer school is at North Collins again this year.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item D, per request to leave school buses and drivers. To lease, sorry. Sounds like that makes no sense. That the recommend, uh, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, school buses with drivers be leased to the Town of Eden Recreation Department for their summer recreation program from June 25th, 2018 until August 1st, 2018.
Second.
Dates and times to be determined. Second.
Now second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Item E, amend 2017-18 school calendar. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2017-18 school calendar be amended as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I should probably ask Adam why this is the case, since he was my resident weather person over the winter, right, Adam? So at about four o'clock in the morning on a, on a semi or a really bad weather day, Adam would start sending me weather posts, cars sliding into the ditch, why we should be closed. And then, of course, 50 other people who agreed with Adam would then all jump on. And it, it, it really does lighten the burden of having to make a decision. And, and, and so I, I say it in jest, but I, I do mean it in all sincerity, that it's fun to be working with the kids on this as well at four in the morning. I, oh, actually, it starts at eight o'clock the night before, or sometimes two days before. Pictures out the window of snow accumulating on the car. But my, but my point in this one is, is that making decisions about whether school is going to be open or closed is incredibly complicated in Eden. What's happening in the village is not what's happening up in the Boston Hills, and what's happening in the Boston Hills is not what's happening in Evans. And, and to complicate it even further, it's a three-hour turnaround on a bad weather day to get kids picked up, home, go back at the second crew and bring them back, and then do it again. So if you figure on a bad weather day, there's six hours that our drivers are in, on a bus, trying to maneuver around all kinds of roads and county roads, town roads. The town always does a great job. And so, you know, I, I guess I just want to put out there that, you know, I'm sorry if I'm ever wrong on my decisions, but I have to stand by them once I make them. And in this particular case, we have one extra snow day left. And as has happened in the past, the board has asked me to revise the calendar to give everyone at school a day off on the Friday of Memorial Day in honor of having an extra day. And so that's what E is all about.
Okay? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
All right. So the Friday of Memorial Day, there is no school for anybody. All right?
Yay!
Sorry, moms. I know some of you really wanted that to be different.
Okay. Item five, information and proposals, a business report.
Okay. Well, the feeling is that we need to have something visual for everybody to see. Go slowly, keep it simple. So let's talk about our budget process and the updates as of yesterday's board vote. So on May 15th, proposition one, which was to expend thirty million ninety thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for the eighteen nineteen school year, had three hundred and eighty-eight yes votes and five hundred and seventeen no votes. Eden now has a failed budget, the first time in decades. Proposition number two, purchase bus and maintenance equipment from capital reserves. Four hundred and sixty-eight yes votes, four hundred and thirty-six no votes. That has technically passed. Board member candidates returning, thank you very much for your service, Jennifer Horshill and Jack Cuddy.
So could we just back up on proposition two, just to put some detail behind that? This is money that's already in reserves?
Reserves are, for better term, lack of a better term, the district savings account. Because of past problems with busing in this district, it was determined to establish a capital reserve for school buses so that buses could be replaced timely so that they would be safer for the students. That is what is being spent here. It will not raise an additional penny of tax dollars.
Thank you.
So options open to the Board of Education. The options are, the board may prepare and adopt a contingent budget without going back to the voters prior to July 1st. They can present one additional budget at a special district meeting on the third Tuesday of June for proposition number one. That's assuming that they accept the other propositions. If the vote fails a second time, the board must adopt a contingent budget with no increase in the tax levy over the prior year's levy. Key factors of a contingent budget. The levy cannot increase by a penny. It stays at last year's rate or the last adopted rate. Administrative component, when we talked about the three-part budget where administrative was at 10%, it must stay at 10% of a contingent budget.
Can you just back up and talk about what administrative means?
Administrative is the district office, the business office, the principals, secretarial staff, buildings, well, buildings and grounds is capital, and also some of the computer infrastructure for the district that was purchased via BOSIS.
Okay, thank you.
The Board of Education must, in its best judgment, exercise what they feel is the minimum expenditures that shall be, that are eligible under a contingency budget cap in order to provide a new budget. And what is an ordinary contingent expense? That will be the big buzzword around the next process if the board does not adopt the, even if they adopt a contingent budget. Contingent, ordinary contingent expenses are essential to maintain a, an educational program, they preserve the property, and they assure health and safety of students and staff. Transportation, years ago, before the tax cap and the changes in a contingency, transportation was on the cutting board. Pupils to and from transportation, under the guidelines of the mileage limitations, which are in our board policy, which at one time were voted for by the qualified voters of the district, that continues. Under article 89, all handicapped children living up to and including 50 miles get transported to their programs. District transportation for non-student public schools beyond the village limitation up to 15 miles, for example, parochial schools as far away as Hamburg are eligible to continue, the students would still be transported under contingent budget. Inner-school athletics, field trips, and other extracurricular activities that are deemed part of the education program by the Board of Education would continue.
That's a change from years ago that's got people confused. So can you, can you talk about years ago where athletics?
Years ago, athletics and things were on the cutting board in a contingent budget. And what was the comment and the outcry was, so if we don't like the budget, we can't afford it and we vote it down. Our children are penalized, so we have no choice. So that was changed when the tax cap calculation came in. They changed a contingent budget, and they said, this is at the Board of Education's discretion for what, as we spoke in the past one, essential to maintain an education program. What exactly is that is now subject to local board interpretation as far as the transportation for the school, athletics, field trips, and extracurriculars. But remember, there's no additional levy dollars.
What is, what is the mileage limitation for the principal? Three miles?
I don't know exactly what Eden's is, but it's three-quarters of a mile and one and a half, depending on your age group statewide. Well, actually, that was my old district. It was one mile if you were K through three. Four through eight is two miles that you could for, have forced a student to walk. This district has adopted lower miles. I believe almost everyone is transported. And so therefore, we can't say that now we're going to follow the state rules. We have to stay with what the board has adopted previously. That's to make it so that we're not penalizing the taxpayers for not-
So just to put a little bit of history behind that, if you were walking to Hamburg, school district, you'd see students walking, and lots of times people will, will tell me that, but my, my child goes to Hamburg, or my child goes somewhere else and they walk. The complication in this town is, is that we have things that could be deemed or have been deemed safety zones, like Jennings Road, or in, in some cases, School View, because there's no crosswalk and there's not a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And so I suspect, although I do not know, that that is the reason why we pick up just about every single student in this district at either their home or on a group stop.
At the elementary level, correct?
Because, yeah, the Weller Division, they can walk, although there are group stops that go through Weller as well. At the high school level, they just choose not to ride. It's easier, faster, and a little sense of pride to walk through the cross.
Okay. So we talked about what was a contingent expense. What's a non-contingent expense? Equipment is deemed a non-contingent expense, except for if a separate referendum is required. So when this district, if proposition two is accepted by the board, the bus purchase with four hundred and sixty-eight yes and four hundred and thirty-six no would still allow those savings to be taken out of the capital reserve vehicles and to purchase the buses for the transportation department, even in a contingent budget. There's some restraints. The use of school buildings and grounds by outside agencies is not allowed if there is any incremental cost associated with it. What's an incremental cost? Well, if I walk in a building and I switch on a light switch, that's a cost. If I flush a toilet, that's a cost. If I drop a piece of paper and then someone has to clean it up, that's a cost. Those costs have to be in a contingent budget prepaid as a donation in advance, prepaid in advance, for outside agencies to use the school buildings and grounds. It does not apply to public school activities. So let me give you an example of where it does apply and where it doesn't apply. And I'm, so we have a choral concert that goes on in the district with the music department, and it's our students and it's part of their curriculum. That's a public school activity, and that is not restrained from being used, does not have to be prepaid. That's part of the curriculum. Let's say, for example, I know Orchard Park has a symphony, and they decide that they want to use, in conjunction with something going on here in Eden, the Eden Elementary Auditorium for a concert. That is not a public school activity, and they would have to prepay any associated costs in order to even be eligible. It is not something the Board of Education can say, well, we're going to make an exception. It's in law. You cannot do it unless they prepay.
So we have a facilities policy now that allows for Town Rec, Boys and Girls Club, PTA, boosters, music boosters, sports boosters. Those are not considered school functions.
No, they are not part of the curriculum. They are not public school activities.
So they would be charged?
They would have to be charged, and it would not be where they come and use the facilities and then pay us. It's a prepay. It's very stringent.
And then where does that money go?
To the general fund, to pay for the expenses so that there is no-
So it's not like that's just money stockpiled?
No, and it's not to derive a profit. It's just to cover the expenses. So if this Board of Education were to choose a revote, the question is, it took us months to get to where we were. How do we do it? Well, here's the deadlines. June 5th, we would have to do our first public note, legal notice. We would have to do another one, two of them. We would have to do a new budget statement and required attachments, and those would have to be distributed. We would have to do a new budget hearing. There would have to be new budget mail or notice sent out to voters. And then June 19th is the statewide budget revoke date. So that would be, if the board chooses that option, the timetable of what will have to be done before June 19th.
So there's pieces before June, there's pieces before that, though. So if the board doesn't make a decision tonight on whether to adopt the budget as it stands as a contingency or to go to a revote, then you have to pick a night for a special meeting and possibly a community forum that would still allow, I'm going to ask Barb, you to get a legal notice in by June 5th. You were writing, I'm sorry. For you to get a legal notice in by June 5th.
We'd have to have the meeting next week.
What is June 5th, Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
That would facilitate any additional budget work.
So Barb would have to get it in by Thursday, Thursday the 31st or the Monday?
No, they're printed on Thursday.
They're printed on Thursday. She has to have it in by Monday, the 20th, which is Memorial Day. So what does that do to you?
Monday, the 20th. That's this Monday.
There's no school Friday. So, so, um-
She'd have to have it in before Memorial Day weekend, is what you're saying.
I've got Sunday, the 27th. You got something different Thursday? I'm sorry, no. So I'm going to say Thursday, the 24th. Okay?
So we have-
She would have to have whatever information you need for the public legal notice by Thursday, the 24th of May. Next Thursday.
I don't feel comfortable making-
Next Thursday.
Any decision tonight?
And Barb is telling me that she usually has the attorney look at the legal notice, too. So sometimes they can turn that around for you today, right?
They never have.
Oh, they never have.
So do we have time to have more discussion? Because I know, first of all, we're missing two board members.
Yes.
And I don't-
Let's, let's move forward to the next slide, because you're already feeling your throat constrict. Your decision to make, you can accept the May 15 results and go to a contingent budget. You can revote on June 19th. Those are the decisions that have to be made. They have to be made in order for us, if we're going to do a revote, to have something done for next Thursday to get things into the paper. That being said, I am going to speak for Barb and myself. We will move heaven and earth if you need time to make a decision to do whatever you require of us.
And it's so what the board is sure needs to.
To meet the deadlines.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable deciding anything tonight.
Is the revote on the exact same budget?
The revote, that is one of the decisions that the board has to make. You can go out with the exact same budget. You can change it in any manner, shape or manner you want, other than enlarging it. So yes, we can do another budget. We can, um-
But in line for it.
Yes. I said, we'll move heaven and earth.
So Jen, I, you, I heard you speaking out. I don't know if anybody else heard you. I just, I don't want to make a decision tonight.
No, I don't think, because we're missing-
Yeah. So I think we need, we need to have more discussion, public discussion, about what we're going to do.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, please.
I would like to see this board have a community forum early next week to get input from the community.
Forum or workshop?
It'd be the same.
It'd be the same, except for I wouldn't propose us giving them numbers. We want to hear from them.
Okay.
What direction they feel we should be going in. They know what we had put into the budget. That information is public knowledge. It's out there. It's on the website. And then from that, I'll hit the ground running and we'll do whatever the board wants at that point. But at least that way...
You might get some idea about why it went down.
You might get some participation from people who are telling you that this is why we would like it changed or how we would like it changed.
Sounds good.
Sounds fair.
I would also add that, just so we're clear, I would not be in favor of going out with a budget that requires a supermajority again. I would also not be in favor of going out with a contingent budget or accepting that budget. So my views are public, you know. There's a laundry list of things, which I'll get to during, when the board has a roundtable, but there's a laundry list of things that would have huge ramifications on this community that I just don't think the community is aware of if we move to a contingent budget.
Okay. So... What about Tuesday night? There's a concert.
What concert?
It's fifth grade concert. It's 7:30. You could do it before then. I'm going to lean on Barb a little bit. We've not really seen each other all day, but it would seem to me that if they did a community workshop, they could follow it immediately with a board meeting to adopt. They'd have to do something with Prop 2, because we haven't done anything with that, and then make a decision about what to do with Prop 1. Does that make sense to you?
Props 2 and 3.
2 and 3. And 3. Well, yeah, because Jen, sorry, guys. So we have to adopt U2. So does that make sense? Tuesday, 6 o'clock, so that we can be done by the concert time?
Sure.
6 o'clock.
And the concert should be at the elementary school next week. So they've worked real hard to push the date up.
So it's a budget, what are we calling it?
Barb, what do you want to call it? A workshop or a community forum?
Now, how are we getting this, how are we notifying the public? I mean, clearly, we're stating it here. There's a roomful of people here.
I'm probably going to reach out to a couple people that have 12,000 to 2,000 people on Facebook watching them and see if they can't get the word out.
Can we also do a robocall so that our family members?
Yep. That won't reach the general community, but it'll reach our own.
6 p.m.
So that's from 6 to 7 here?
I would go 6 to 7 on June 22nd, for what I think I heard you call a community, what?
May.
Yeah, not June. Sorry, guys, grateful thinking there. Budget workshop, followed by a special board meeting, Barb?
Yes.
Followed by a special board meeting, and Barb will push out the agenda.
So it'll be here, correct?
Yes, it has to be here.
Okay.
Yeah. Somebody want to make a motion to do that for me, please?
So make a motion to have a budget form on May 22nd, followed by a special Board of Ed meeting?
Second.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, p.m.
Here?
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Stained. Motion carried.
So, okay, so that means that you could feasibly have stuff by Wednesday to give to the attorney? Okay. All right. Okay.
Just to be clear, the boys have a playoff lacrosse game on our field that night, so...
What time?
Girls and boys.
Girls and boys, what time?
What time's the boys?
Girls will probably start the early one at 4:45. Boys will probably be done at 7.
So I'll be here until 2 minutes to game time, so...
All right.
They're probably putting it to 7 if we're hosting girls at 4:45.
Anything else?
All right, the superintendent's report.
I'm good. I'm okay without that. Thank you, Laura. So I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. So we've worked really, really hard to get the elementary school auditorium earlier than June 5th. My understanding as of this morning is that the two concerts next week are planned for the elementary, or the one concert, I think it's fifth grade, on Tuesday is planned for the elementary auditorium. One of the delays, though, was because we actually had a little extra money left over from the capital project to redo the floor, paint the stage, do the curtains, paint the railing on the pit. And it looks pretty cool. So what's Sin's job now is to get the sound balanced, right? All right, so good luck with that. And the curtains are hung, except for the side panel curtains and the window curtains, because the installers didn't bring a high enough scaffold. So they'll be back Thursday or Friday. I think it caught them a little off guard. Fitness Center. So I just wanted to thank especially Marissa and our guys for getting the Fitness Center open, was it last, Marissa? Was it last Monday, Tuesday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday. It's an absolute wonderful sight to see. I've given a couple of tours to people from the outside. So just to put on record, the Fitness Center is open to our phys ed students, open to our athletes, open to our coaches, and it is open to our staff. The outside door, though, is not readily, it's not accessible yet. The sidewalk's not in, the sonotrell's not up. So there's a few complications for people that don't already have that key to get in from the inside, but we are shutting it down at the end of the, Marissa, help me again, what date?
June 23rd.
So right after school lets out, because construction will start on this campus again. But it's just a beautiful site. We can't wait to open it up to the community in the fall, and Marissa and I will be working on a RFP for someone to manage that site for the community in the fall for Silver Sneakers or something similar. It's just a beautiful facility. District Office and Business Office moved. Laura's already moved into the district office, because of course, we had to move out of our old offices, which is where the Fitness Center is now. Laura's staff moved in today.
The last of my staff.
Last of your staff.
Willing for three days.
And then Barb's going to have to make a decision based on the failed budget as to whether she can honestly move Monday. You and I haven't even talked about it, so you were scheduled to move Monday. I don't know if that's still going to occur.
We were scheduled for Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday. All right. So you'll have to let me know if you want to do that. So it's not quite finished, but if we didn't move now, Laura threatened me that it wouldn't be till September, so that, because of auditors coming in. And that's all I have.
All right. Moving on to the board report, or this is time for the roundtable.
Roundtable?
I know probably a few of us have things to say. I do want to apologize for my little emotional outburst. I've been coming to board meetings for seven years. I cry at least once a year, so I was due. So that, and it was in part to Mrs. King's departure, but this is spending an emotional night. It was a lot, and is. Missy is sitting out there talking about how we volunteer our time, and we do. I literally get a text from my husband that my daughter, my seven-year-old, for the first time, made contact with a ball that was pitched to her and made it on base. So, and I missed it, but anyways. Education is something I feel passionately about, and I feel like this community has suffered enough loss when it comes to education. And it's through no one particular person's fault. It's the nature of how things have played out over the last few years. And people might say it's cliched, but it really is at the expense of our kids and the future of this community. The school district is here to provide for these kids, to give them what they need, not only to be successful adults, but to give them an experience that hopefully will draw them back to this community. That's the only way this community is going to grow and survive, is to make it a place that kids want to come back with their families. I've said it time and time again. I'm here because my husband loves, loved his experience as an Eden Raider. That's the sole reason I'm here. And if we can't do that for our kids, we will be a dying town. It doesn't matter. So people can gawk and say it's cliched, but the truth of the matter is, what we do is because of these kids. And I don't think, I respect the vote, but my fear is that it was based on a whole slew of misinformation and misunderstanding. So I respect it with caution, and I'm not judging anyone. I respect that people are entitled to their opinions, but I'm saddened by the fact that misinformation, false narratives were spread through social media. And I personally don't recall anyone in the time that we were developing this budget coming up to this podium and sharing concerns with us that we saw on social media. I don't recall. I haven't had any emails sent to me. I haven't received any phone calls. So now at the 11th hour, we're all scrambling to try to figure out what exactly happened. People had questions. They weren't directed to the right people and in the right manner. And I understand that social media is the up and coming, not the up and coming, it is the thing that people use. But it's not how any of us were trained to communicate as board members. It's supposed to be in, communicated in a manner that is public, that is, can be monitored, that is via email and via a public meeting. I don't know how we fix this situation as far as social media. I don't know what we do or what we can do as a board, giving people an outlet to contact us. If this is their preferred method of communication, I feel like we have to figure out something because what we're doing isn't working. We're not getting our message across, and we're not able to fix things as they come up, because we're hearing about them when it's too late. And I want to remind people, too, that we, the board, I was saddened, I did read some of the comments, and some of them really pointed to the fact that somehow we, as a board, had some sort of devious plan to not be forthcoming with our process. I don't know how much more open we could have been about the budget, shy of skywriting. I don't know what else we really could have done. There was no hidden agenda. We are, I think, as, I mean, I've been coming to board meetings for the better part of seven, eight years now. I think as a board, we genuinely have the best interests of the kids in this community at heart. And we are all, as elected board members, taxpayers in this community. None of us are jumping for joy at the idea that our taxes are going to go up, but we understand it's the reality of what we need to do to support this school and these programs. I don't, there was no ill intent, ever. So the idea that we had some master plan and we're scheming, it was not only ludicrous, it was hurtful to me. It's hard not to take it personally, I guess, as someone who's spent a lot of nights away from my kids and baseball games and watching my daughter get her first hit. It's hurtful. So I would hope, from this point forward, that we can find ways to communicate more effectively with the community. I think had more community members been here, they would understand that we, as a district, are struggling to meet mandates set forth by the New York State Department of Education and maintain programming and give the kids all the extras that they need and want to be successful.
And be safe.
It's hard. It's hard to balance all of that and stay without raising taxes, without reaching to the community for help. And I hate, I don't even want to use the term raising taxes. We're reaching to the community for help, because we really are stuck between a rock and a hard place. I do like the idea of a public forum. I'm hoping that we get some good feedback from people, because I am curious to know exactly...
What we do.
What we need to do to bridge the gap between what seems to be a clearly divided community right now.
So Sin and I had some conversation this morning about a district Facebook page. I had some lengthy conversation with the board attorney today regarding the cautions of a Facebook page for a district. As you know, the district is not the district. Me being a district representative in the Board of Education, on any posting of a Facebook social media site has to be facially neutral. And so in attempting to address some issues that we may be seeing, hearing on other social media sites or in other places around town, I would just caution that if, in fact, Sin is able to get this Facebook page up for us prior to the vote in June, that if it's opened up administratively to anyone sitting at this table, that there can be no question about it being slanted in any, any direction at all. It must be facially neutral.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to bring up a few things regarding a contingent budget, so that it is painfully clear to everyone and crystal clear to everyone what a contingent budget ultimately means. We're just going to read a couple sentences from a nice seven-page document that we received regarding contingency budgets. I assume I'm allowed to read this?
Yeah, it's public law.
So the use of public school buildings for teachers' meetings and parent-teacher association meetings with school connect purposes, that's allowed. What's not allowed? It does not include programs of entertainment and/or of a social nature. So, I'm not a lawyer. That means dances. So how ridiculous would it be for us to be charging our kids to use our building to have a dance?
I don't think that's...
I don't think that's...
Yeah, so school...
It's okay.
Qualifies? Good.
Yeah, it does.
So that's the first thing that came to my mind. My guess is, there's all kinds of activities that happen here at school that we would fall outside of this, we would charge. The second is much more significant. Public use of school buildings and grounds, except where there is no cost to the district, but the district can charge a fee. So if you're around the school, you know that there are people here six and seven days a week in every gymnasium that we have. As Laura pointed out, virtually any inside activity has a cost. There's a light switch. There's a mop that has to be around that affects, to a huge extent, Eden Recreation with all the adult volleyball and adult basketball and all those things. It would affect the booster clubs, both the music and the sports booster club. It would affect the Boys and Girls Club, Little Cagers. We would be charging all of those people, not to make money, but that, and it's ultimately not the board, it's the state saying that you have to charge these people. My guess would be that the town, through its rec department, could not afford the amount of money that we would be charging them, being forced to charge them. There's zero chance that the Boys and Girls Club is going to be able to afford to pay us to use our gym, which we give them gladly, which I have been a huge proponent of. Outside, you could say, well, we could play soccer outside. We're not really costing the school any money. You could argue that. But we certainly couldn't turn the lights on on the turf field. That would be a cost, unless somebody's willing to pay for that. I think the ramifications are incredibly significant, that we, families swim, I mean, go on and on and on. I mean, it would change the way this town operates. I'm sure we would look like the bad guys ultimately, but this is the state dictating how we're going to run our district if we adopt a contingent budget. And the final thing is not directed at anyone here. I'm incredibly disappointed that, after all the things that I was fortunate enough to read on Facebook about me, that no one was willing to come and say some things. If you didn't like the budget, if a person, not you, because you're here, if a person didn't like the budget, why didn't they come and tell us? And why didn't they come and say something? I'm here...
All, every day?
Four or five nights a week, at the concession stand, at the field. I see these guys here all the time. We're here all the time. If speaking in public isn't a person's thing, I get it. It's not my thing either. Just bump into me at the concession stand and tell me, you know, this GPS thing, we don't like it, whatever. We're willing to listen all the time. And to find out that there's hundreds of people who are furious about this, that, or the other thing, most of it based on incorrect information, and not one of those people were willing to approach us at any time to say it. We're not bad people. We will listen. It's frustrating and disappointing, truthfully.
This is...
Joe, can you use the mic, though?
This is soon to be wrapping up my first year on the Board of Ed, and I'm glad I'm on the Board of Ed. When somebody first asked me if I was interested, I was like, what? Why? But this is a great group of people, and I have some...
with through BOSI's, and this has a really good reputation as a school board, and I do remember my first day meeting with the various people I had to meet with to learn, to start to learn the ropes. I forget the gentleman's name, but he said, well, your first job is to take blame, take the blame for everything.
That was the board attorney.
Okay, and I just kind of went, whoa, you're trying to scare people off, or what? But then I'm like, okay, you know, I get it, somebody's got to take the fall. But I think, to piggyback on what Jack and Jen said, it's very frustrating, I mean, I'll volunteer all the time in the world, I don't have a problem with that, but when misinformation is put out on social media and, you know, attacks on us as a board, it's frustrating. And yet, I can be willing to bet, I look out on the group here, all of you people are fairly pro-board, you may not like all of our decisions, but you're here because you support us, and the ones that are making the social media comments, they're not here. Okay, so this is falling on deaf ears, I get that, and I wish there was a way to reach those people, because we are approachable, you know, or, but yet, I'm sure some of my colleagues will agree, we're often approached with all the negative instead of anything, and we're approached, you know, accosted at the gym I work out at, or accosted at the grocery store, and I can handle that, I'm a big girl, I got pretty tough skin, but it, it becomes a beat-down after a while, and then, you know, after last night, I was just like, wow, this is a reality. And I hope that we can figure out a way to get out to the people, to come to this budget workshop on the 22nd. You know, tell us what you didn't like about it, have a solution to the problem instead of being the problem, or being part of the problem. But I, I'm, I'm here for the rest of my term if they'll have me, and I might even run for another term if they'll have me, so you're not scaring me away yet, okay? But I thank everybody, I appreciate this, and I thank the public, too, thank you. And Missy, good job. Oh, one more thing, as far as the rec department goes, I serve on the rec advisory, the town rec advisory board, and the, you know, if there's a contingency budget and they have to pay, Amy Porter and the powers that be are in the process of really revamping the town rec program, I mean, it's just, it's, there's so many awesome things to come, things that she's already done, and this would just completely take the wind out of their sails if that.
The funding is not there.
Yeah.
Just go away with any message, the funding is not there.
It starts with summer school.
It starts with summer rec.
Yeah, the summer rec.
And again, I'm sure you people that are sitting here don't necessarily need to hear this, but it is, I mean, I, you know, sports had a lot to do, sports and activities outside of academics had a lot to do with making me the person I am today. I can say that for my sister and her husband, their children came through this school district. I don't have any kids, I don't have any kids in this school district, my sister and her husband's kids are gone from this school district, but I'm a taxpayer here, and, you know, anything that's going to squelch any kind of program for a kid, whether it be sports, any kind of after-school activity, it's a shame, so I'm praying that we don't have to go to a contingency budget, because it's going to affect not just, it's not just going to appease the people that were happy to see the budget fail, it's really going to negatively affect a lot of positive things. No, I'm finished.
I just want to piggyback on everything you're saying, I would hope that you could all encourage the people that voted no to please come to that budget workshop next Tuesday, because we heard nothing, at the budget workshops we had, people were very positive about the things we were proposing, or they said nothing, and none, I mean, I never got an email or a call, I mean, email is easy, if you don't want to approach us, send us an email, but we heard, we really did hear nothing, and it is difficult to know what people want if they're not letting us know, so please spread that word, that we really want to hear from everybody, whether they're for us or against us, we want to know what we can do to make this right.
Yep.
Because it is discouraging, you know, it's been an interesting first year, right, Cheryl?
That's right.
We learned a lot this year.
Hasn't scared me away, though.
But on a more positive note, thanks to the Model UN, that was a very interesting experience.
And they're still here, too.
Super fun.
That, that shows the strength of the teachers and.
Absolutely.
And students that we do have, we, we are having, we have wonderful things going on, and I think people forget that.
I think the interesting thing about Model UN is, if you remember, Model UN was a non-funded program, how many years ago, Adam, help me?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, and it was the students themselves that came forward to the Board of Education to ask to fund the program, and, and so that's what we're listening to, is what do our kids want?
And they came forward.
Yes.
And we listened.
Yes, we did.
And that's honestly, honestly, what we try to do.
Yeah.
Okay, are we good? All right, future dates, so we have a budget workshop slash forum, next Tuesday, May 22nd, at 6 p.m. in the Junior Senior High School cafeteria, with a special Board of Ed meeting to immediately follow.
And then this one should be, yeah, this one's right.
And then a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, June 20th, 7 p.m., Eden Elementary Auditorium.
So just to let you know, starting June 20th, all board meetings will be at the Eden Elementary Auditorium to signify how proud we are of our signature building. Don't come here, because you won't find us. Okay, anything else?
All right, to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.